Good morning, councillors. Whilst you are still standing, I invite my chaplain, the Reverend Canon Sudashen, now to lead prayers. Thank you.
Let us pray. Almighty and loving Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for gathering us together on this crisp morning. Your word is a light unto our path and a lamp to our feet. We thank you for your guidance in the past, and as we continue to make decisions impacting the whole county, we pray that you will continue to guide us with your wisdom. And we pray this Christmas season help us to remember the light that came into this world to guide us. So we commit this day into your hands, and this time. Bless our thoughts and our words. May they be acceptable in your presence. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
All right. Please be seated. All right. I appreciate that there may be a few late comers because of the situation on the A15, but meantime, apologies. Debbie, are there any apologies, please?
Yes, thank you very much. We've received apologies from councillor Allen, councillor Ashley Morris, councillor Boquet, councillor Brooks, councillor Nicola Clark, councillor Coopland, councillor Griggs, councillor Strangle, councillor Dr Thompson, councillor Tyrell, and councillor Wright. Thank you.
Councillor Parker?
Could I give the apologies for councillor Karen Lee?
Are there any further apologies that have been missed? No, thank you. Right, moving on then. Do councillors have any interests they wish to declare? Seeing none, we move on. Item three, the minutes. I hope that you have all read them, and that the minutes of the meeting of the County Council held on the 27th of September be approved as a correct record and signed by the chairman. All in favour, please show? Clearly carried, obviously a few abstentions. No one against? All right, that takes us on then, now to item four, the chairman's announcements. I'm going to start, please, by actually formally welcoming councillor Manzio Hassan as a member of this council, formerly elected very late last night. The full details of this, of yesterday's by-election, will follow this agenda item in a few minutes' time. Right, I don't give a full list of what I've been doing, obviously during the last few weeks. But since the last meeting of the council, I have been busy carrying out civic engagements around the council, around the county, and I think it's noticeable probably that things are getting back to normal after the lull for Covid. Right, this, the last few weeks have included the celebration in particular of Lincolnshire Day, when we once again joined with our colleagues from the north and north-east Lincolnshire as Greater Lincolnshire to celebrate this great county. This event was held in Lincoln at the castle. I was delighted to welcome guests to my service of dedication, which was held in my local church in Wiberton, and I thank the Reverend Sudashen for officiating and leading thy worship. It's my wish to encourage people to visit my division, and I felt this was an opportunity for me to showcase what we have in the south and east of the county. The remembrance Sunday service held in the Lincoln Cathedral was a very poignant occasion, and I was honoured to lay a poppy wreath on behalf of the County Council. And I add that anything I do, I am doing it not only for the council, but I feel I am doing it on behalf of all members, all residents of Lincolnshire. Thank you. It is with great sadness that I report the death of former chairman of the County Council, Colin Hellstripp. Mr Hellstripp was first elected to represent the Stamford South Electoral Division in May 1997. Four years later, he was elected to represent Stamford West, a seat he held until his retirement in June 2009. He was chairman of the council in 2006 to 2007. I also have to report the sad passing of former county councillor Philip Cadell, who represented the Stamford North Electoral Division from May 1993 until his retirement in May 2001. Mr Cadell was a former, also a former member of South Casterburn District Council and of Stamford Town Council. Also, we will remember, I think it's, we think that it's appropriate to do so, a resident, or at one stage resident, that the death was announced yesterday, of Johnny Johnson, aged 101, the last remaining member of the Dam Busters. I invite you all to stand for a minute's silence as a mark of respect for these gentlemen. Thank you. Following on from this, I will invite any member who wishes to pay their personal tribute to either of these former councillors. I will add that I attended, on behalf of the council, I attended the funeral of county, of the former chairman of County Council, Colin Hellstripp, at his funeral in Stamford, although I didn't know him. Interestingly, he obviously, clearly is known to quite a few of you, and my husband, my consort, in fact, as soon as he looked at the sheet, said, oh yes, I remember him. So it is, you know, within relatively recent times that he was chairman of this council. Now, would anyone like to pay personal tributes? Councillor Hill, thank you.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, it's quite unusual that two former members of the same place are being, being sort of remembered today. I think they were both sort of quite, well, they're sort of jolly people, actually. They're very, you know, they're the sort of people you, when you met, it was all very inspiring. Colin Hellstripp, for example, was very well known in the town of Stamford, very popular, and he was one of those people everybody knew, you know, just every, you walked, if you walked round the town, everybody knew, how Colin, how you mate, and that sort of thing. So he was a former chairman, of course, and had a very active role in, in the matters of this council. Philip Cadell, of course, the Labour councillor, again, I knew pretty well, because I was also on the Police Authority with Philip at the time, and again, what I'd call a pragmatic and a sort of pragmatic politics, if you say. He very much believed in representing his town, but was also pretty sensible. And, you know, I think he was, both of those individuals were very much of the view that although what we do is very serious, it doesn't mean to say you shouldn't, you know, be, have a bit of, a bit of amusement and fun at the same time. So I think they're both sadly missed. The one thing I remember about Philip was that when I was on the Police Authority, we went down to Stamford Police Station, and there was this big problem. They were telling about they wanted to expand the police station, and there was a problem with this tree, which was just in the, in the front of the, I think it's still there, actually, in front of the police station. So there's, they had all the builders there and the surveyors, and they're saying, well, I'm going to have to do this, and work round this tree, and it's going to be very expensive and difficult, etc. And Philip just said, why don't you just remove the tree? And, you know, it's just one of those moments where common sense prevailed. I don't think, I think the tree is still there, and nothing ever happened at Stamford Police Station, but I always got on very well, both of them, particularly Philip, and he was a very useful supporter and help for all of us on the Police Authority.
Thank you. Are there any further, councillor Parker?
Thank you. I'd like to speak about Philip Cadell. Philip was, as has been said, a councillor for eight years. He left, I think, in 2001, and since then, we've kept, my wife and I have kept close touch with Philip and Liz, Liz, his wife, over the last 20 years. I mean, it makes it easier to say that he moved from Stamford to Mounslow, which is on the coast, just outside Cromer. So it's easy to see why we wanted to go and then spend time with both Philip and Liz by the sea. As Martin said, I think that I would go a bit further and say he had an irreverent approach to the council, in the sense that he never took it quite as seriously as everybody else. But that doesn't mean to say that he wasn't an effective councillor in Stamford, and held responsibility under the Labour administration of 1993 to 1997. He ran, when he left the County Council, he ran a newspaper called Crabline, which was very well sought after. It's a local newspaper that he created from, from scratch. And he then did all the things that Philip did well, which is get to know people, talk to them, get stories, put it in the newspaper, and that became quite a success in Cromer and Mounslow. As I said, we visited him. I went to his funeral, which was very, very well attended, from local people in Mounslow and Cromer. And personally, I think that he will be much missed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any further speakers? Right, we'll move on then. Item five, the result of the by-election for Spalding West Electoral Division. Sorry, I'm not reading the right bit. I'm still a learner. Right, we move now to item five on the agenda, that the electoral return circulated with this order of proceedings be noted. They've got it, have they? Well, because I haven't. Thank you. Right, question, item six then, we move on quickly. That's the statement, announcements by the leader and members of the executive. Councillor Hill, would you like to say anything?
I haven't got an announcement. I'd just like to formally welcome councillor Hassan. Through gritted teeth, congratulate him for his election victory, but as you're well aware, he's a very hard act to follow, but I'm sure he will, he will serve the people of Stamford, Spalding West, in the spirit and the hard work that his predecessor did. So welcome, and I hope you enjoy your, your term as a county councillor, however long that might be. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, as I said, welcome, and I think you'll settle in very quickly here. Thank you. Councillor Hill, we move on now. Would you like to report on executive portfolios, please? Thank you.
We've dealt with statements, have we, chairman? Just checking. That's been dealt with. Yes, I'd just like to actually move this report. The first thing is, it basically is just a routine report, but also just to confirm that councillor Bradwell will, as part of her portfolio holder responsibilities, will also take on migration, because she's, she's already on the East Midlands Migration Board, along with councillor Wright. So formalise that, because with all the, all the issues around migration, and obviously the publicity, which we are all aware of, we thought it's important. There was one, one point of contact, both for the public, the media, and for other councillors in those issues. So that is the change there. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Hill. Right, we move on then. Item eight. I'm not missing anything, am I? We just seem to be getting through things very, very quickly this morning. Right. Questions to the chairman, leader, executive councillors, and chairman of committees and subcommittees. Right. I have a list in front of me. I'm anxious to allow a good spread of questions across the chamber within the time allocated. I tend to allow 45 minutes for questions, and I'm expecting councillors to be disciplined because of the time available. And I think that includes probably also the executive members with their responses. When invited to ask their questions, councillors should press the button on their microphone to make it live, and press it again once they have finished speaking. Thank you. All right. The first question that I have is from councillor Colin Matthews for councillor Colin Davy. Councillor Matthews?
Thank you, madam chair. And let me apologise in advance. This is a long question. The question is short, but the background is long. My question relates, councillor Davy, to the outer-dowsing offshore wind farm, which is a massive development off the east coast of Lincolnshire. It's been proposed that cables from the wind farm come ashore near Andaby, and then travel underground to a 25 hectare substation near Alford. The power will then travel further underground to a larger substation, 50 hectares, also near Alford. From the second substation, it is proposed to run the power via overhead pylons from Cleethorpes to Spalding, and these pylons will be 50 metres, 50 feet high above the ground, and travelling around, around the periphery of the, of the walls. Each cable route's up to 200 metres wide, and involves the movement of hundreds and thousands of tonnes of chalk, both in and out. I understand the need for a British Energy Strategy, and Lincolnshire's responsibility to share in supporting this, how we are experiencing a disproportionate amount of disruption, cost, and ugly infrastructure. Please, can you explain the council's official, official view on this matter, and what, if anything, we're doing to resist this development? There are a further five offshore wind farms to be built, and all will pass through our coastal patch. Lincolnshire will get no benefit from this energy initiative whatsoever. It is important we make our opposition known now. The MP for Lough and Horn Castle, Victoria Atkins, has pledged her opposition to this scheme. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davy?
Thank you very much for that question. I think firstly, I would like to say that, you know, we are supporters of the offshore wind proposals in terms of a balanced energy mix for the UK. However, how they come onshore needs to be thought through properly. And as you've rightly said in your question, we have already had enormous disruption on the Lincolnshire coast from the work we committed to, to deliver Viking Link, which is the big interconnector, and the Triton Null offshore wind farm. The problem we have is energy policy is not joined up at national level. We've got 20 years of chaos around energy, which has led to a policy that's essentially delivering gas at high prices to all consumers, which is why everyone's energy bill has gone up. We know that Crown of States have consented all these new offshore wind farms. They need to work together. There needs to be a proper offshore grid strategy to join these wind farms together, with one cable route coming onshore, not six. And like my colleagues in Norfolk and Suffolk, and East Anglia generally, the proposals there for the East Anglia Green, as it's called, which includes further pylons through that part of the country, they're being absolutely opposed by all of the MPs in that area and the local councils. And I am obviously talking to them about how Lincolnshire might want to have a joined-up approach with East Anglia, and send a clear message to government about how we work with the energy companies and work with National Grid to deliver a single solution that actually gets the power delivered to the south, which is where it's required, in a much quicker way, rather than going through individual public inquiries on each application, and making sure that we can help the government deliver their zero-carbon ambitions for energy in a much more consistent way. I'm not going to see, and I don't think this council would want to see, six more cable routes coming through the east coast of Lincolnshire, and giant pylon lines, which will wreck the tourism economy of the Lincolnshire coast. It will not be an attractive environment for visitors from our Midlands and South Yorkshire heartlands to come to. So there needs to be a better solution, and we will urge government to look at that single offshore grid solution, and I think that is the right way to go. We need to protect our natural environment. We need to enhance our natural environment through future generations, not industrialise it, and that will be my very clear message and understanding.
Thank you, councillor Davy. My next question is councillor Julie Kelly for councillor Patricia Bradwell.
Thank you, madam chairman. How is Lincolnshire County Council going to ensure that school meals are nutritious, or is it like many of the things to do with education, nothing to do with us? Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's okay. You can call me by my first name. So, yeah. Well, we work with, with schools regarding school meals. It's very important, as you say, that children have a nutritious meal. So that we do have people here at County Council who do work with the primary schools and that. Obviously, it's more difficult across the county, but there is, we do have this requirement that they do have to have a healthy meal. So, yes, we're very keen on the children having, you know, that might be the only hot meal that some children get a day. So it is important that, you know, they are getting something that's nutritious and hot. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bradwell. Councillor Phil Dilks for councillor Richard Bootroyd.
Good morning, all. To councillor Bootroyd. Following the decision by South Casterburn District councillor fortnight ago not to repair the roof, let alone refurbish Deepings Leisure Centre as previously promised, leaving no swimming facility in my community, may I ask what condition the building is required to be in on its return to the County Council? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, for your question. As always, when we, when we rent or lease out property, there's certain criteria we'd expect to get the building back in. We'd expect to get gas safety certificates, electrical certificates, asbestos registers, etc. So these are all the things that we're currently in conversations with SKDC and the academy to, to see the way forward, really. Once it's formally handed back, we'll do our own assessments and see where, see what the way forward is with the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, moving on then. Councillor Stephen Bunny for councillor Patricia Bradwell.
Thank you, councillor Bradwell. I've recently had the opportunity to visit Osgoody Primary School near Market Raisin, and have to say how impressed I was with the new classrooms built to replace the mobile units. They will definitely have a positive effect on the level and quality of education delivered at the school. Unfortunately, the school does not have a hall, meaning that December's lunchtimes, etc., and other whole group activities are taken in the classrooms. Consequently, furniture has to be moved, extra adult supervision, interrupting staff preparation time, doesn't, doesn't allow the rooms to be used for small, or the rooms aren't allowed, aren't available for small breakout education groups, have a detrimental effect on the overall learning experience. This could be mitigated by leaving one of the current huts in situ to act as an assembly dining room and a location for the out-of-hours club. The PTA and school are happy to raise funds for the required decoration, environmental screening, and maintenance of the building. The governors have asked for the unit to be returned, but have been told that this is not possible. Could this decision be revisited to ensure maximum education performance at the school?
Councillor Bradwell?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here. I'm just getting up. Yeah, thank you for that. I do remember coming out, because we did car parking and all sorts out at the school, didn't we, for them? It is a small rural school, and many rural schools do not have a hall big enough, large enough to take a whole school or even infants and juniors. So, and it isn't something that we would do under a building programme. We don't get the funding from the DFE that we used to do for school buildings, and our budget is mainly down to expanding schools and putting new classrooms on and that. So I'm afraid, you know, I'm happy to come out again and have a look, but as I say, most of the time, lots of schools don't have that hall that fits the size of the pupil numbers. What I would also say, though, as well, though, you talk about the mobile classroom. I'm, I think, if I remember rightly, that mobile classroom is really no longer fit for purpose for children to go in, because I know there's several mobiles there. And I, and I think, but I will check with property whether that's the case or not, but I know that there was, you had a, well, two or three there at one point. So I will go back and check that out and come back to you about that. And as I say, more than happy to come out and have another walk round that lovely school. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, councillor Alex Hall for councillor Woolley.
Thank you, chairman. There have been issues at Louth Hospital with providing access to the urgent treatment centre due to a shortage of staff. Is there anything that you can do to address this matter so that patients living in my division aren't left having to travel all the way to Boston, Lincoln, or Skegness?
Thank you for the question. Yes, like you, I was a little bit alarmed to hear that the Louth UTC had had to close unexpectedly. And so I've had a conversation with the chief executive of Lincolnshire Community Health Trust, who are responsible for running the UTC bit of Louth Hospital, because as you quite rightly say, it's a very rural, isolated area, and for somebody to have to travel distances, and then only to find and then only to find that somewhere's closed is not good. I've been assured it was very unexpected, it was predominantly down to staffing issues, but nevertheless, they had to make a decision based on patient safety and indeed staffing safety as well. What can I do? I have said it would be helpful if they have any communications that they wished us to help cascade out, we would be very happy to do so, but this is really an NHS health communications issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on then councillor Andrew Key for councillor Martin Hill OBE.
Thank you, madam chairman. And could I thank you for a very enjoyable and uplifting service of dedication at your lovely Wiberton church? Thank you. My question is, does the leader share my concerns about the BBC's proposals to cut the amount of broadcasting, local broadcasting on BBC Radio Lincolnshire? This would mean that there'd be less programmes dedicated exclusively to Lincolnshire with more shared output across the region and more all England programming. BBC Radio Lincolnshire and other local stations are a vital resource in this rural community of ours. For the housebound and isolated especially, they are a friend through the day and into the evening. In times of trouble, whether that be extreme weather events like snow and flooding or breaking news stories, their coverage is vital in keeping the county informed. A reduction in local journalism is also a bad thing as the local press are able to hold councils and other public bodies to account and investigate issues that more regional centres may ignore. Thank you.
Councillor Hill?
Thank you for the question. Yes, as members, I hope members are aware that naturally the BBC are doing a review of all local radio across the whole country. And as councillor Key has said, they are proposing to quite drastically reduce the locally produced output. So in effect, I think the local output will be between six and 12 weekdays, then the rest of the time it will either be regional or indeed national. And that will include all the weekend as well. And obviously will have quite a dramatic effect on local journalists. And as councillors, I think we all appreciate and welcome the opportunity that local radio gives us, A to get our message out there, but B also to explain our actions to the public in general. So I do share his concern. And although I think I have to be honest in this and say perhaps the amount of pure journalism, local journalism, for example, in some of the early morning programmes are probably less than they were, is still a valuable asset. And although in terms of funding, I can understand the issue with evenings in particular, but I think it's particularly unfortunate that Drive Time, for example, which is the afternoon show, will not be there and it will be, there will be, as many journalists, but they will be regionally based and Lincolnshire output will be in competition with Nottingham and places like that. So I think there is a concern and I will write to the BBC in response to this and it will have quite a drastic effect on the local people employed at Radio Lincolnshire.
Thank you. Members might be interested to know that I and some others attended the Radio Lincolnshire recording of the Carol Service last night in Boston Glider Room with the RAF band from Cranwell. Right, moving on to questions. Next questioner is councillor Richard Cleaver for councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you. Councillor Davies, could you tell us when the much delayed review of parking in Stamford will begin please?
I must correct you, it's not delayed. We are waiting for the Grantham review to finish. When that's finished in the spring, as we've said to you before, Stamford's next on the agenda.
Next question then councillor Matthew Bowles to councillor Mrs Bradwell.
Thank you chairman. Morning councillor Bradwell. Twelve years ago, the Gainsborough Academy, or as it was then Trent Valley Academy, opened to much fanfare and promises of better quality of education for Gainsborough children. In the ensuing twelve years, academy has seen no less than ten head teachers, three different mat sponsors, one name change, numerous uniform changes and the continual revolving door of hundreds of members of staff. In September this year, the school was inspected by Ofsted and once again rated inadequate, meaning that in its various guises, the school has sat in this category since May 2013. Hundreds of parents now make the choice to incur huge costs and bus their children out of town seeking a better education for the children, not even considering the academy as an option, leaving the academy at 50% of its intended capacity. Whilst I fully appreciate academies are not under the control of LCC, Gainsborough children cannot be left to be continually failed in such a way. Would you be willing to meet with me to discuss parents' concerns and what LCC and other organisations can do to work with the school to turn the tide and stop another generation of our children facing these same issues? Thank you.
Councillor Bradwell?
Thank you. Thank you for that. Actually, I don't think there's anybody more frustrated than myself about the Gainsborough Secondary School. I mean, we, the council invested a lot of money and it's a fantastic building. And we, and I know the director as well, you know, we do talk to the regional school commissioner and I understand that at this moment in time, there's no decision being made about the current trust, but, you know, they are actually, they are seriously looking at the situation and hopefully they will make the right decision and we can then move forward. But I will, I'm happy to come over to Gainsborough and meet with you or whatever, because as I say, I remember us opening the school and at that time, the school was a good school and then obviously was taken over by several trusts. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we move now to councillor Rob Kendrick with a question for councillor Davies.
Thank you, madam chairman. Councillor Davies, I'd like to draw your attention to some concerns that residents have raised with me in my division concerning the progress on road repairs on some fen roads and in particular Blankney Fen New Road. I wonder if you could give some attention to that please? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think probably the best way of dealing with this is to come down and have a look at your roads. I have the recent joy of being with councillor Pepper down in his division and it's fair to say fen roads in particular are really struggling with the drought and then the wet and I have a horrible feeling this cold weather's not going to do them any favours either. I mean, some of the cracks are opening up on some of our fen roads like Potato Field, so we need to do more, but I will arrange to come and see you and let's go and have a look at the roads first hand.
Thank you. Right, my next questioner is councillor Kevin Clark for councillor Bradwell.
Thank you chairman. Councillor Bradwell, I wrote this question before I read the report on the executive on Tuesday night when it was reported about failing academies. Your quote is, we have no jurisdictions going to an academy, they are effectively a private business. My question is, eighteen local maintenance schools in Lincoln have turned down the option of going into academy status. However, speaking as a governor, as one of these schools, I feel I'm being bullied by the government to become an academy by 2030 against the will of the school. Therefore, can the schools who do not wish to become an academy have the support of this authority opposing the move or is the authority happy to chuck us into another failing business? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. I don't think it's the local authority who's going to throw anybody into an academy system. And as you've quite rightly said and acknowledged, that this is, the DFE's push is absolutely going down the academy route. In some instances academies work, in others they don't, and especially in very small schools, you know, it's very difficult and for them actually sometimes to be able to cover the curriculum that they do have to do now. And merging with another school could be the best thing for them, but I wouldn't say that's definitely the academy system. It is, we've always said, right from when the academies were first launched by the government, that it was up to individual schools and governors and parents to make that decision and we would still support that. The only time when we perhaps wouldn't is when we've got schools in special measures and actually then the DFE will try and get a new, put it with a trust or find a new trust. But I would acknowledge the same as you, the academy system has taken away the feeling of schools probably belonging to a, to a community. Different communities, you know, are very different, but I just think, I agree with you, but we have to work with what the government is telling us to do and that can be very difficult. So if you want to have a word, do you want to have a word with me about the schools you're talking about? Not do it in public and then we can see where we can go and get some advice. Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bradwell. My next questioner is councillor Marianne Overton MBE to councillor Martin Hill OBE.
Thank you very much indeed. I am spokesperson for highways, but I'm not doing it this time because I won't accept to say thank you because our highways have been improving and they needed that extra funding we put in. My question to councillor Hill, the government seems intent on changing our democratic voting system as soon as may to require specified photo identification. This does nothing to tackle the big areas of fraud, which we see in postal voting in other parts of the country, and makes it harder for some people who do not have or do not normally carry such identification. It will require extra staff and polling stations need reviewing and there is statutory consultations that will be required for that, which is why the Gould Principle sets six months as a minimum for changing, a deadline which has now passed. Last sentence, the government seems to be continuing on this line despite the relevant expert bodies, having all pointed out that this is democratically unsafe in that time scale. Can you add your voice in calling for your conservative ministers not to rush into this as soon as may? Thank you.
Thank you. I must confess, I'm unsighted on the six-month rule which you talked about. The answer, the short answer is no, because I do believe that it is entirely reasonable that when people go to vote, there is some identification and the opponents of that trying to make out it's some fantastically difficult thing to do. Most things we do now, we, nearly everybody walks, has identification. My understanding is the polling card is sufficient and most people will have that. And frankly, I do not actually buy the issue that this is going to be so difficult that people can't manage it. I just don't accept that argument. Have to, you know, and I would also say, you know, I think I would agree, it's not a, it's not a massive problem, but it has been a problem. And bluntly, it has been a problem in, not in local elections, but we've had issues which are of dubious credibility in parliamentary elections and in Lincoln. So I think there is a legitimate case to make sure that if you turn up to the polling station, you do have some identification, which I would suggest 90% of the population do anyway. So I actually will not be supporting what you propose.
My next question is from councillor Tom Dyer for councillor Colin Davies.
Thank you very much chairman. Climate change is an important issue for everybody in this chamber, or at least I hope it is. Residents in my division have asked me what the carbon impact would be if a member of this council were to fly from the United Kingdom to Sharm El Sheikh for the recently concluded COP27 conference. Could the executive member for climate change update the council with what impact such a journey would take?
Thank you very much for that question. Yes, climate change is important, it should be important for all of us in terms of addressing our ambitions for net zero 2050. In very short answer to your question, it's about half a tonne of CO2 emissions for a round trip to Sharm El Sheikh from Birmingham, which is our nearest airport that flies there. And obviously you need to plant some trees to offset that. So certainly in December and it's Christmas, maybe a few Christmas trees planted on land would suffice. So I think four nice big Christmas trees would help offset that. I'll just make the point though about COP27, as I did about COP26. I think it's really, really disappointing to see private jets lined up on airfields, flying in from all over the world, where people get together, whether it's NGOs or government people or whoever, to have a conversation about rules for us that they are not prepared to follow themselves. And that is, that is the issue for me. And quite honestly, you know, I watched a Twitter chatroom event the other night with 110,000 people engaging with Elon Musk, taking questions. You can do all of this now with technology. You don't need to spend millions and millions of pounds of money on doing events like COP and other events similar. We need to get much smarter, use technology for what it's there for, actually to actually have a global conversation about big issues and that includes climate change.
Thank you. All right. My next questioner is councillor Noisier for councillor Richard Davies.
Good morning. Thank you. Another question, just a thank you for highway executive, a highway team to support Mabelthorpe school children for causing, they've been waiting for 20 years. The head teacher nearly kissed me, she can't, you know, because Covid, the court are possible. I have to thank you very much through Richard Davies, through executive and all your team and I appreciate it. I hope you support Mabelthorpe and rural area. That's all, no question. Just a thank you.
I will respond, thank you councillor Noi. That's very kind of you. And just to address some of the heckling I've just received, there is a, there is a scurrilous suggestion floating around the chamber, madam chairman, that the connection between the new Mabelthorpe crossing and the new various motorways we're installing in Mabelthorpe is anything to do with councillor Seers cooking. I can assure you, that is absolutely not the case. But if I could, for my next visit, order some tat cantan, that would be lovely. Thank you councillor Seers.
No problem. Let me know when you come in the next visit.
Thank you councillor Seers and councillor Davies. We move now to councillor Robert Parker with a question for councillor Hill. Thank you.
Morning Martin again. Just before I ask a question, I presume that the order proceedings here for questions has got a mistake because councillor Dyer's down twice. So I presume that he will be the same as us for, everybody has one question. My question relates to your role as the supremo, as it were, for premises. And I look around county offices, if it isn't yours, you looked immediately away, but I think you've got premises. Is that right? No? Okay, then it's to councillor Richard Bootroyd. So premises, okay. If you walk along any corridor, you can usually open a door and see nobody in. Next one along, nobody there. Go upstairs, walk along, nobody there. I just wonder what the long-term perspective is, or even short-term as well, about what we're going to do about this estate, which is not just about county offices, but it's about other buildings on this site. We don't seem to have had much recently about it. I know there's local government reorganisation coming up, which could change the nature completely of Lincoln as a base for whatever system comes into place. But could you give us all an indication of how you see us occupying space in this building in a much more, what I would call, efficient and economic way?
Thank you councillor Parker. We are at current doing a full survey and a full appraisal of all buildings on this campus. We were slightly slowed down with the change of AD and our new AD obviously starts later this month. We are looking for a 40% reduction across our whole estate, but that would include potentially this campus as well. So we've done various surveys of occupancy over the last two to three months. We've asked all departments to feed in through a questionnaire of their current and future requirements for property, so we can get not just, not just a look at where we stand now, but a look of where we stand in the next five or the next 10 years, so we can properly judge our property needs across, across the whole portfolio really. So we can properly judge our property needs across, across the whole portfolio really and the whole estate. So I hope that answers your question.
Just a quick one, very quick, when will we see the light of day of any report?
Yeah, we'll, it would obviously go to scrutiny, but, but I've been pushing for the last two months really to get, to get that in front of myself and the property team. I'm hoping by the end of first quarter next, next year, we'll, we'll have a full report and a full vision of where this council's going to go, especially with respect to this, this Newland campus. So I hope that helps. You might have noticed the avenue buildings are on the market. So we are looking at various options at the moment. We decided they were surplus to requirement at this time. But we've obviously got to look at Orchard House A and Orchard House B and this building. So, so, and then the front of Newland as well. So they're, they're sort of the ones that are up at question at the moment. But there is definitely a, a drive to consolidate and, and to, to make sure we're getting our best use out of our buildings and not costing the council any more money than it needs to. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, my next questioner is councillor Ashley Baxter for councillor Richard Bootroyd.
Thank you, chairman. Following councillor Dyer's question, I'm tempted to ask what the carbon impact was of flying a delegation to China not so long ago, but I won't, I'll stick to the Lincolnshire issue. Councillor Bootroyd, some members of South Cusick Stephen district council are already trying to blame the county council rather than their own recent decision to permanently abandon Deeping's leisure centre after promising as recently as February to do a ten million pound refurbishment. This U-turn has caused, caused all kinds of anguish in my community. So if and when the building is handed back to the county council, before any decision is taken to spend hundreds of thousands of pounds demolishing the building, can I seek your assurance today that the county council will allow time to explore all options with potential public and private partners and most importantly with the local community to reopen the building? Because the community remains desperately keen to see the roof fixed and the pool reopen and the centre reopen. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Baxter. As you know and you've probably heard, the county council don't run leisure facilities. So we would, we would not be looking to reopen that as a, as a local authority. Once the building is handed back to us, we will be obviously looking at assessing the building and the condition that it's in and talking to the academy to see whether there's any requirements they might need from certain facilities on site. But certainly after that, we, it's probably too early days to really, to really give you a confirmed answer. I'd be certainly looking to visit the site early next year to walk around with the property team. And I think anything, to tell you anything now would be speculation really, we just need to go and see the condition. There's clearly health and safety issues we need to take concern as a council and security issues as well, while the building remains empty. So, so there's various things we need to look at. And if it was to be demolished, it would be quite a complex operation. So, so there'd be various planning and things that we'd need to do. But we're certainly, we're certainly looking at where we need to be. Okay, before then.
Thank you. Right, I have two further questions. Councillor Hilton Spratt for councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you very much indeed, madam chairman. Good morning, Richard, councillor Davies. Notwithstanding the fact that there will always be problems with antisocial parking around schools at particular times, those schools that are situated on housing estates. However, as I've already indicated to councillor Davies, we've got a major problem in my division on the junction of Bradbury Avenue and Calder Road. I've got residents begging me for W L lines down Bradbury Avenue. And I wonder if we can do something to alleviate the problems, particularly, madam chairman, of people parking in front of driveways and stopping residents getting out and about. Thank you very much, madam chairman, and thank you councillor Davies.
Thank you for the question councillor Hilton. Yeah, I mean, getting parents' behaviour to change is rather like trying to turn the Titanic round on the Mississippi. It's next to impossible. But I think the best thing we can do, because you know, that junction with Calder as well and the school, it's quite a cramped location, isn't it, is to do a site visit and get the team to do a full assessment and potentially look to working with the school as well to see if we can do a bit of an education campaign coming on the back of probably the debate we're shortly going to have.
Thank you. And our final question today, councillor Michael Clarke, sorry, for councillor Richard Bootroyd.
Thank you, madam chairman. I'd like to ask please, how many people does the council employ who have a disability? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clarke for your question. I've got the relevant information in front of me, if you don't mind, I'll read from the paper. Obviously, HR data up to the thirty first of October this year states that we have five hundred and forty, five thousand four hundred and thirty six total employees. We have declared disabilities of two hundred and fifty five. We have no disabilities of two thousand eight hundred and twelve. And the people that decided not to fill out the relevant section of the form, which is not a statute requirement, so they're perfectly entitled to do that, is two thousand three hundred and sixty nine. So I can, I can send you these details over by email just for reference. Thank you.
Thank you. That now ends the questions. I apologise if we've missed anyone. Some names were down twice, so we assume that was just error because I don't think you get to questions. Right, agenda item nine then now, political proportionality and allocation of seats to committees and subcommittees. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, madam chairman. Yeah, there's two parts to this recommend, to this paper. One was in the event of a change of party of the, from following the by-election yesterday, there would have been a change of proportionality, but of course that is not the case and the South Holland independents will remain as they are with their three members. The other part of it was the pensions committee have agreed that they would like, I think it would be appropriate to have a representative academies on that committee because the academies are a substantial part of the pension fund. A lot of them actually, I think most of them actually are a part of that pension fund for their, the members they employ. So there's a change there in terms of the council is being asked to approve that additional added member. So that is the recommendation now, I'd like to move that. Thank you, chairman.
All right, you have moved the item. Do we have a second, councillor?
Secondary chairman.
Do I have any speakers? All right, we'll move straight to the vote then. Those in favour? Thank you, I think this is probably unanimous. Those against? Any abstentions? Right, clearly carried then, thank you. All right, that takes us on now then to item ten. The Members' Allowances Scheme for twenty twenty three to twenty four, which you will have read, I'm sure. And do I have a proposer and a second for this?
Thank you, madam chairman. Obviously, this is the annual required, legally required report which comes to council to report on in public what our proposers are for members allowances. Policy of this council for some time has been to actually just reflect and match whatever the local government employee's settlement is. And usually that has been pretty straightforward. But this year, the government has given a flat nineteen hundred pounds increase to all employees, which of course means there is not, not a straightforward percentage rise we could actually look at. The independent remuneration panel has met recently and looked at this and members will see there is a recommendation in there that basic allowances go, would go up by six point five or six point eight percent and special responsibility allowances would go up by four percent. I think what I'm proposing today is that we just go for a flat, well, it's a four point oh four percent, which is, if you look at the report, is one of the options that is given to us. It is not the recommended option from the IRP. Well, I think we all feel in this, these difficult times, it would be inappropriate to go any higher than four percent. I would also remind members that it's not compulsory to take your allowances. Any of us, anytime we wish, can write to the director of resources and say we wish to forego all our part of allowances. So I, I would like to move the four point oh four percent increase to, to the councillors. Thank you.
And do I have a second, councillor Dilks?
Yeah, madam chairman, thank you. I understand that the remuneration, as recommended, is, is lower than that recommended by the independent remuneration panel, as councillor Hill has said, and well below current inflation rates. None of us becomes a councillor for the allowances we receive, they are allowances, not wages. I hope that no one is out of pocket or faces financial hardship by serving as a councillor. And it is on this basis that I second the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any speakers? Councillor Overton?
Thank you. Not unhappy with what's been proposed and I think the thinking behind it is perfectly sensible. It's just a point that for the future, if you always put things up by percentage, then you're always going to be increasing the differentials between the haves and have nots, if you like. And that I think is why the government, I believe rightly, sets a set amount of increase rather than a straight percentage. So I think they did think about that, not trying to, trying to reduce the differentials between the bottom and the top. So thinking for the future, we might like to consider that. Thank you.
Any more speakers? Councillor Parker?
The independent remuneration panel came up with a six point something figure that you quoted, Martin. Your recommendation was for four percent. We have over a period of time consistently used the independent remuneration panel as our guiding tool. I wasn't convinced at all by the relative slimness of the argument that on this occasion it has to change. I'd like a much fuller explanation and whether or not in the future we are going to abandon the idea of having an independent remuneration panel.
Any more speakers? All right, so I now move councillor Hill.
Yeah, thank you. I think two very valid points have just been raised. And I think, yes, councillor Overton, as she said, you know, whether we go down the road of, you know, looking at differentials and whether, which is actually is what the IRP actually did, did recommend, there was a differential. I just think, and I think very valid point from councillor Parker, you're either, you were either, you know, following the IRP recommendations or not. But my, my view is that they gave us some options, of one of which was their preferred option. But certainly I do hope we get to the stage where we just follow the recommendations. But I just felt that the, I think the view of councillors in my group was that to actually go for a six point five or six point eight increase, probably at this particular time, with all the issues of inflation, with, you know, strikes, people striking because they're only getting five percent for exactly as they see it, probably wasn't the right time. But I think they are both very, very valid points and I would hope in future, we are able in future just to follow the recommendations and make it very simple. So I, I accept both points made and they are noted very seriously.
And councillor Dilks, I didn't give you a chance to speak earlier, do you wish to? Has you seconded it? No, thank you. Right, then we move to the vote. Those in favour, please show. Right, those, those against? And any abstentions? I will abstain as chairman. I think that was clearly carried, wasn't it? Do you need to read the numbers? No, all right, thank you. Right, well, we've made very good progress up to now. We move now to item eleven in your agenda, in your meeting papers. This is a devolution deal for Lincolnshire and a report by the chief executive has been circulated. So we'll now move to this item. Do I have a proposer and a second, please?
Thank you, madam chairman. I think it's quite opportune, this, this debate is happening today, which is the day after, that two more devolution deals have been announced by the government for Norfolk and for Suffolk, who will, when their elections take place in twenty four, not twenty twenty four or twenty five, they will get more powers, but also about twenty million pounds a year each in funding. Those two deals recently announced are also, are in addition to the other ones which are currently announced, which is Derbyshire, Nottinghamshire, Cornwall and North Yorkshire and Yorkshire. So the government is making good progress in the twelve or so bids that they are currently considering. So I think we all accept, and I think we've had these debates before, although, you know, there are maybe some parts of the required governance, I'm talking about a directly elected mayor, of course. I think there is an increasing risk that the, this council, this county area, Greater Lincolnshire, will start to lose out. It's not just about the money, it's pretty clear from allocations and conversations the government made, it's very clear that they will want to talk to mayors or their equivalents in areas first. And those who haven't got mayors or their equivalent will be, their conversations and et cetera will be after the mayors have filled their boots, basically. So there is an increasing risk that we will lose out. In terms of this progress report, because it is just a progress report, you'll note from the recommendations, no firm decisions, but there obviously, it is talking about the emerging bid and the progress that has been made with all the ten councils across Greater Lincolnshire. And this paper has gone to North Lincolnshire and North East Lincolnshire. And as under the current proposed legislation, with the, there are, they, they, themselves and the county council are what's called constituent authorities. So, you know, I think it was appropriate that we join them in this progress report to make sure that it was, it was there. And I think the other purpose of this progress report was to make it clear to government the next round of, they haven't, worryingly, there was no announcement by the chancellor when he made a statement whether there'll be further bids going forward. But we're very hopeful in sometime next year, middle of next year, maybe, the government will have another call for devolution bids. So I think it's, we feel it's very important that we are seen to be ready, willing and able to put a bid in. All detailed decisions, of course, will be, have to come back to each individual council, certainly the constituent councils, but we're very clear, all of us and certainly the upper tier councils, that it's very, very important, and you'll see from the report, the various paragraphs within the report, it is really important that we engage properly and make sure that partners, particularly districts, but also business and voluntary sector are also part of this. And just, and part of the issue is, although it does say district councils can't be constituent members, that doesn't mean to say they cannot be a voting member. So I think there is general agreement across the whole, whole area. And certainly this council has previously agreed that, that we are clear on the geography. We are clear that we want a devolution deal for Greater that we are clear on the geography, we are clear that we want a devolution deal for Greater Lincolnshire, and we are getting to a very close stage where, in my opinion, the proposal or the bid is getting very close to being acceptable, certainly to the three upper tiers, and I think, to be honest, to most of the, many of the district councils. There is more work to do, and I think whatever governance we actually have to look to, it needs to take account of the population of the three areas, because obviously the county council area is a lot larger, more than twice as big as the, or nearly three times as big as the north and northeast population. So I think there is some work to do in terms of making sure that is reflected in the governance model which we come up. And to remind members also, it's not just a conversation to be had within Greater Lincolnshire. The government has a keen interest in how that governance should work. And the obvious example we've got is the recently announced Derbyshire Nottinghamshire deal, which is a two-tier area, and that is the sort of, I was thinking, the model where actually we shall get together and, you know, how it might work. So conversations are ongoing, there are still difficult conversations to be had regarding governance. I'm confident we will get there in the end, but I think until we can just try and firm up the what and the where and the rest of it, and there will be an issue about what this governance would look like, and we need to have that conversation, especially when, hopefully, there are invitations for more devolution deal bids next year. So I commend this report to the council. We've also done an extensive consultation with the business community, which was very well led by the LEP, the LEP, which was actually very successful and had a lot of responses. And the feedback from business was very much, yes, get on with it, we want it, and please, can you get on with it and let us know how your progress is? So this paper to this council is part of that process, and we are, good progress has been made, but I think we need to be clear, there is more work to be done, particularly on the governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Dilks, I think you were first. Oh, sorry, we need a seconder before we go any further. Thank you. Councillor Colin Davy?
Yeah, I second and I reserve my right to speak.
Cool. Right, councillor Dilks?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I speak against the recommendations. I'm all in favour of decisions being devolved down to local level, but that's not what I believe these recommendations would lead to. When proposals to create a combined authority were last voted on, I spoke in this chamber against an extra tier of government with a mayor in charge of a massive diverse area, lumping in Baston with Barton, Stamford with Scunthorpe. I said then, it might be good for the industrial South Humber Bank, but not for areas like mine in South Kestevan. And I noted that my home in Deepings was nearer Westminster than it is to Emingham, still is. In two thousand and sixteen, before councillors voted last time, we had a public consultation across Lincolnshire, where fifty-three percent of the votes were against the proposal, and only forty-two percent for. In every district, the majority was against the proposal. In South Kestevan, it was sixty-one percent against, only thirty-four percent for. Lincolnshire County Council, with that in mind, voted against a mayoral combined authority for Greater Lincolnshire. It wasn't even close. It was forty-three members against, and only seventeen for. I believe it was not a whipped vote at that time. So here we are again, but this time no public consultation. Last Friday, senior Conservative MP David Davis said on Radio Four, quote, "I'm not a huge enthusiast for this devolution unless local people want it and have voted for it, but not if you're just going off the back of the councillor who might become mayor." In the vision document before us, it says that if this plan is approved by two thousand and fifty, we might, quote, "Citizens will have an increased say, involvement and role in deciding what happens and how it gets implemented." Well, why not give our citizens that voice now on how they're governed? The vision also suggests a combined authority could deliver, quote, "the best education for every child, better transport links, increased economic growth, and so on." The very things I thought national government is responsible for delivering right now. Does anyone really believe that to improve education and transport links, we have to create yet another tier of local government on top of the existing parish or town, district and county councils we now have? The government clearly wants a mayor, one person to liaise with and make decisions affecting the lives of over a million people. Madam Chairman, isn't that why we elect our MPs to be our voice in Westminster? The report before us says the recommendations have been informed by collaboration and involvement across all ten councils in Greater Lincolnshire. Anyone could be forgiven for thinking that these proposals have been approved by the district councils. But I can assure you there's been absolutely no public debate at South Kestevan, nor here, I think, since the idea was voted down in two sixteen, twenty sixteen. What's proposed is called a combined authority, but it appears our seven district councils will not even have an equal place on it.
Councillor Dilks, I think we're running over time.
I'm just finishing, if I may, coming to a conclusion. By the way, have we any idea of the extra costs of this? Finally, my bottom line is the promise I was elected on eighteen months ago. I promised voters that I would challenge the plan to create a gigantic Greater Lincolnshire authority. Unlike some, I don't make promises I can't keep. Thank you, Madam Chairman, for your indulgence.
Thank you. Right, please try to keep to time in future. Councillor Parker, you're next, thank you.
I'll be voting against this proposal for different reasons. I think the starting point is context, and the context really is about why are we doing this? Well, follow the cash. Government is always able to bribe local authorities by saying, well, there'll be more cash in this deal. That's one of the ways that, by virtue of local government being poorly funded by central government, that we're always looking for ways to find extra money, and this seems to be one of them. But I also disagree with it fundamentally in principle. I think the starting point would be that Labour's got its own agenda for devolution, completely different to the Conservative Party. So I'll give you some of the examples why, when the next Labour government is elected, I can't help but feel that will be the case shortly. More local powers in England over the economy, so there's going to be a devolution of powers from the Treasury and the Department of Economic Affairs to local government. Local councils to have the power to levy hotel taxes. Local leaders to have power over job centres as a result of a devolution of skills policy. I think the final point is important, the removal, taking away of powers to the House of Lords with greater representation across the regions and local government. So this is a complete transformation, in the sense of saying local government has got to be made much more central and not so highly dependent. So yes, I don't disagree with the idea of devolution of powers, but I do disagree with the format that's been presented. Labour in government nationally will do it differently, and that's why I'm voting against this resolution.
Thank you. Right, moving on quickly, councillor Parkin.
Thank you, Chairman. Like the previous two speakers, I will also be voting against this at this time. Again, not because I'm necessarily, in principle, opposed to devolution, but just the manner in which we are doing this. I completely agree with what councillor Dilks has just said, in terms of the importance of our local communities. We are democratically elected councillors, and we should be taking these decisions back to them. And there is nothing in this document, there seems to be no plan for that. It feels like a steamroller effect, and that worries me gravely and deeply. I'm also very concerned, and I was pleased, actually, Martin, that you addressed those issues in terms of governance. I am concerned about our district councils' voice in this, and that they are important to our communities and they are important to us. And I'm not sure if councillor Hill has seen the email that has been sent to all East Lindsay councillors on that today, but I think there are some very serious and interesting points in that. It is interesting that councillor Leyland has said, "We cannot agree to this until we know these details", because the devil will be in those details. That governance is crucial, that four-one-one proportionality that the districts are asking for is actually so important for us to nail down, not somewhere down the line when we're already on the steam train, when it's already left the station, but for that to be fundamentally enshrined as a basic principle now, so that our residents, who we are here to represent, can be assured that devolved assembly is there for them as Lincolnshire residents. So I do not, I will not be absaining, I will go the whole hard and reject this, because I do not have the answers to those key questions and those fundamental points here before us today.
Thank you. Councillor Ashton, Tom Ashton, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I am content with the recommendations before us, and I shall be voting for them this morning. I fully appreciate that what we're dealing with today is, in effect, a holding document, a holding position, an update, as it were, on where all this is at. And in principle, I have supported the concept of devolution and a mayor since two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen, when I first discussed it with councillor David many, many years ago. And when you look at the areas around the country that are already going down this track, I think it's certainly something that we can't afford to ignore here in Lincolnshire. And actually, I'm pleased to see that we are still talking about a mayor in this context rather than some of the other quite odd arrangements that have been taken forward elsewhere in the country, which I don't think would suit us here. I'm also grateful for the reassurances that councillor Hill has given us, that these outstanding matters will come back and will be up for consideration another day, and that my understanding is we will have the opportunity to debate them properly here in the fullness of time, because it's absolutely right that if we do go down the route of a directly elected mayor, that we have not only a combined authority that reflects the population, as councillor Hill rightly said, of this bit of Lincolnshire, against our friends in South Humber side, but also that we have a combined authority with the strength to rein in an over-mighty mayor should one take their direct mandate too far. Because I would never wish to see an over-mighty mayor riding ruffshod over the political leadership of this council and the political independence of this council or any other. But I am, as I say, reassured by what councillor Hill has said on these issues, and I am content to support the recommendations this morning.
Thank you. Right, councillor Overton, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would also like to speak and vote against this proposal. You might say it's just an update, but actually this is still putting in writing and voting and confirming that we want to go in this direction. And that means that staff will be employed in that direction, and our staff will be working in Scunthorpe or Grimsby or wherever else as part of their normal work because this has been agreed. So it is not just something that can be ignored. I also strongly support, and I've spoken here many times, about supporting devolution. And I mean devolution of power and money from central governments to our councils. I don't mean power to a mayor or power to a few pairs of hands. Devolution to a properly democratically elected body as we are. This is the right body to receive those funds and powers, which is what we have been doing. And the suggestion that twenty million is worth chasing is not right. We have something like a budget of around five hundred million. We got something like a hundred and ten, I think, to spend on the eastern bypass. The figures that we need are much greater than that. And that's why we have to focus the whole of our work, not on chasing this goal, but on chasing what is right for the communities in Lincolnshire. And those are the things that are carefully written in this document. So yes, let's go for those things, but let's not chase the latest gimmick that this government might be putting forward to try and chase our tails. The points about the lack of governance arrangements already in place are important. A few people could sit around the table and make decisions that many of our residents are unhappy with. If they find it hard at the moment to influence our county council as it is, imagine how much harder it will be when it's a huge organisation of well over a million people and at just a few hands. It will not be easy. Those people in few hands that it is will be having to chase the tails of the government and also of a few other people, not necessarily local government is what we really want. That's so much better. So this is another tier of government, another tier of bureaucracy on top of what we have. And therefore, it's not necessary, and we should be focusing on what's best for Lincolnshire. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cleaver?
Thank you, Chairman. We need to see the elephant in this room. The current government has had years in which to address the issues outlined in this devolution prospectus that we've all read. And this prospectus proves that what's been done so far is wholly inadequate. And it appears that Brexit has only made the challenges we face even greater. All we're being offered at the moment are crumbs from the Conservative Cabinet's dining table, and stale crumbs at that. Our county deserves a fuller, fresher approach. Whilst I support devolution of powers and funding from central government to local government, in principle, I cannot support this motion as drafted. I cannot support adding another tier of local government. The residents of my division do not want an elected Greater Lincolnshire mayor. I cannot support a motion which contains no commitment to a full public consultation. Engagement of key stakeholders? Why not engage not with all stakeholders? There's supposed to be a democracy. I cannot support a motion which does not seek guarantees that there will be no change to the role and boundaries of our district councils without their consent. We need to keep local democracy local. I cannot support a motion put forward concerning an issue which has not been reviewed by scrutiny in this council since the last election. I cannot support a motion which does not set out a minimum standard of democratic control and accountability for any new devolved powers. We shouldn't just be lobbying for devolution. We should be lobbying for a comprehensive solution to all the long-term economic and social issues which affect our county. Thank you.
Councillor Brockway?
Thank you, Chairman. I thought long and hard about this paper, actually, because fundamentally, I'm not sure that I'm a lover of devolution. I can see the pros, I can see the cons, but with certain aspects of it, the jury is still out, as far as I'm concerned. With regard to this paper, it's very much the what rather than the how. And the reason I'm going to support it, without referring to anybody else, is that what it does, it's an aspirational document which gives a huge amount of information to the very people that the other councillors are talking about, like councillor Cleaver. This is giving information to the public. It's telling the public very clearly, in very, very good user language, what we are about, what we're aiming for, and it's very important that we should do that. We're bringing people in. And the recommendations are that we go for a devolution deal on the basis of the draft devolution prospectus. I'm aware that governance is not in yet, but, you know, again, it is the what rather than the how. This is an early one, giving to members of the public the information that they need to start becoming involved with us in what we're doing. It's very, very important that we do consider It's very, very important that we do consider the advantages and not just the disadvantages. We're talking about decisions being taken further away. My experience of this council is that it's not an easy council to swamp. It's not an easy council to push by the side, to the side, it's a strong council. We will be right there at the table along with everybody else. Nobody has mentioned the potential for economies of scale, but within a more local environment than that of Westminster. So on balance, and having thought about this very carefully, I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chairman. I support devolution, I support genuine devolution, but this isn't it. The Government fact sheet defines devolution as, devolution means that decision-making moves closer to the citizen and is more democratic. Will this proposal ultimately move decision-making closer to the citizen? No. Power can only be devolved downwards, not upwards. Power can only be devolved downwards, not upwards. People in market deeping don't care too much about decisions that are made in Grantham or about Grantham, let alone in Grimsby. Only when, only when it affects the people in, in market deeping, when ignorant councillors in Grantham make ignorant decisions about what goes on in the deepings. Does the proposal make decision-making more democratic? My lecturers used to say that Britain is only democratic once every four or five years on election day. For democracy to work, it has to be accountable and accessible. This latest faux devolution is not going to be accessible or accountable. We're not even going to, we're not even doing any consultation on it. The LEP support it, we're told. Well, who elected the LEP? What's democratic about the LEP? Most people don't even know the LEP exists, let alone how it works. Why would anyone in the current Lincolnshire want an extra tier of local government, which is more concerned with Cleethorpes and the Humber than with Spalding and the Welland? As I've said before, I think we should devolve decision-making down from the county to authorities which are genuinely more local. In fact, I would abolish this county council. The government has systematically undermined local government for years by reducing our funding and tying our hands again and again. And now we're expected to shuffle ourselves around in order to get a tiny fraction of that money back. I'm curious to know whether or not there's a political whip today from any of the groups, and I have to say, it's a shame that it's not a recorded vote, but I'm happy to be recorded as saying, I'm not going to vote for, for this nonsense, not now, not, not ever.
Thank you. Right, and now councillor Marfleet. I'm keeping it moving.
Thank you, Chairman. It's not often that you hear so much rubbish mentioned in this chamber. You know, we all, all you lot over there have said, we all want devolution, and then the next sentence, but we don't want devolution. You know, at the end of the day, devolution is a progressive way forward. And actually, it's about encompassing the whole of Lincolnshire as it originally was. You know, it's not about South Humber side, it's not about, oh, those lot over in Grimsby. Actually, my area butts onto that area, and actually, everybody wants to get better joined-up services. You know, devolution is here, it will help deliver levelling up agenda, it will help do many a things. And why should we not have a big vision for what we want in Greater Lincolnshire? You know, negative, negative. It's not deflation, it's devolution. As Boris would say, let's get Lincolnshire devolution done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Danny. Thank you. Um, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. What I will say, I mean, Norfolk, I think they get their devolution, it's a deal to give councils more power, you know, over spending. However, I'm going to talk about my town, Boston, and how I see the devolution. I would think the devolution will bring us equal opportunities. What will the devolution brings to Boston? Boston, the town which could not afford a Christmas light, instead we bought a plastic Christmas tree. Boston, which is used to be thriving town, now it looks like a very poor town. The dream of a bypass, hey ho, Lincoln, get, keep getting bypasses, Leeford got one, Spalding getting two. Would the devolution, would the devolution will be fair for Boston? If so, then I will be supporting it. For me, my, my whole concern is Boston, and I would love to see, as I say, that the beginning equal opportunities, and I would like to see that Boston will thrive behind the devolution. And as I say, therefore, I shouldn't see any problems in supporting it. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Councillor, sorry, I haven't... Councillor Cook?
Thank you. Was I next on the list?
Pardon?
Sorry, oh, you're right.
Yes, I didn't have your name.
No, no, that's, that's not a problem. Well, thank you, Madam Chairman, it was lovely to see you and your husband last night at the, in Boston, at the BBC RAF Radio Lincolnshire Concert. Look, devolution, so where am I at? So for me, if we want more power and more budget in Lincolnshire, then devolution and a deal is the only way we are going to get that. Now, I've had the assurance by the leader of the council about the governance today, and this for me, it's about us as a county, not as councils, it's about a county. And, you know, I want to see us succeed. I don't want to see us left behind. We are being surrounded by other areas where deals are now being done, and that will leave us to the detrimental harm to our residents and our businesses. Now, I appreciate and know that with the government and Deluc, they are at capacity, and at the present time, they are not taking forward this deal. But that is not to say that there will not be a window where, if there is that very short opening, that we should get our submission ready and ready to be submitted, so we are there on the front foot. And ultimately, this is going to be one of the most important decisions that we will take on the future of our county. It comes back and it will set the direction for Greater Lincolnshire as a place for many years to come. And I will continue to push for fair share of funding across all of our great county, as I'm sure we all do. And I know that there's still more work that the government needs to do in getting fairer funding for us as a county. It was mentioned about the LET conference, and I was also there, and I think most of you know that my view on that is it was vitally important that we engaged with our business community. It is them that drive the economic growth and provide jobs and prosperity for our county, not the public sector. So it was incredibly important to hear them speak and promote our area, and telling us that they want to see something happen where they see other businesses and other sectors in other areas getting support and getting funding. Now, for me, there continues to be further work on this. There has got to be, and I'm sure there will be, more engagement to make sure that we have the best deal for Greater Lincolnshire as a place, not just for us as councils, but for us as a place. This is not the final decision, there are missing key components, and I respect the fact that the final deal will come here for us to debate and discuss. But we have got to keep pushing and promoting our county, which I also want to see stay together, and I'll put that on the record, for the betterment of our residents, to make sure we get the fair share of funding and powers. And I would also like to thank all the people that have been involved in this document. There's been an immense amount of work by both officers and elected members from across councils, across the entirety of this council. There is a lot of work to do, there is a lot more to do, but I will continue back, standing up for our county, and I will back this today, because I've had the assurance from the leader, but we have got to be on the front foot, getting the best deal for Lincolnshire moving forwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bunny, were you waving your hand or not? No. Okay. Right, that's one less then. I think this falls back to you, councillor Davy, for your summing up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I think it's been a good debate. I'm just going to add a couple of additional thoughts. I think councillor Cook actually encapsulated a lot of what I wanted to say. When I joined this council in 2003, I, I felt that we were not focused on where we wanted Lincolnshire to be in the future. I didn't think we had a vision. And I think we have to have a vision now, as councillor Cook said. It's been vitally important to me, I've done a lot of work as a director of the Greater Lincolnshire effort, as the council's representative on it, since 2013, to foster this identity for Greater Lincolnshire, this economic driver, that we can do great things here in Lincolnshire, but also as part of that Greater Lincolnshire whole. And we will not achieve a future for this great place of ours unless we work together as a collective, that we promote the Lincolnshire message to government, whichever colour of government we have. And I, I note councillor Parker's comments about Labour's ambition for devolution. When I get through the 700 pages of Gordon Brown's document, I'll tell you what I think about it, councillor Parker, I'm not there yet. But ultimately, devolution is about giving power back to us in this chamber. It's giving power back at a local level to our colleagues in the district, so we can collectively make sure that we have a vision for this place, that we can all support and we can all carry forward. The document today, as has been said, is a staging post on that journey. It is not the final decision. That will come back to all of us to have a further discussion about, provided government, of course, allows us to even put a bid forward. But we should be ready to make that bid, and then we'll discuss what they offer us, whether it's what we want, whether it's acceptable to us, and that's what we need to understand. This is a journey, we need to be on it, but we might not like what we arrive at. That is going to be for us as councillors to decide, but we should not vote against today to delay that opportunity for that final decision if it's there to be taken. So those are my thoughts. I'll hand over to the leader.
Thank you. Councillor Hill, you sum up, of course.
Thank you. I think it was an interesting and good debate. Like councillor Dilts, I actually voted against the devolution deal back in, whenever it was, 2016. Even though I find it incredibly frustrating, where I see other areas doing better than Lincolnshire in terms of opportunities, and I see, you know, the mayor of Birmingham and mayors up here there, Ben Houchen, the mayor of Teeside, they're actually getting investment opportunities from government, and it is very frustrating to see that, but not for one second do I regret that decision, because you're right about the, the proposal on offer at the time. They actually adopted that in Cambridgeshire and Peterborough, so every time I feel a bit frustrated that we didn't go for it, I look over there and think, actually, at the time, that was the right decision. Look, this isn't easy, I don't think many of us here today would really, if we had a choice of our own, would go for a mayor and, and that situation. But the truth of the matter is, that is what is on offer, and it's gone so far now, because I mentioned the recent devolution deals, there's all the cities, and there is, I think, nearly half the country now, if I'm not mistaken, which is under that. And government, what it wants, it wants to talk to 40 or 50 key people across the whole country. I think we would argue, what's wrong with council leaders, but that's not what's on offer. So I think, it is a dilemma, but I think it's, to me, what is it about? Do we believe in devolution? Yes. Do we believe in Greater Lincolnshire as an entity that should be protected? To me, that is yes, because there is a danger, and I hear what councillor Parker says about what the Labour Party have said, all parties in opposition wax lyrical about devolution, because we are the most over-centralised country in, in the developed world, but when it comes in power, it sometimes changes. And I agree with councillor Cleaver, what's on offer is very limited, it could be better, but I think it should be seen as a first step, that on this journey, that eventually we will get more powers. It's not just about cash, councillor Parker, it's about those powers, powers over education, powers over highways, because one of the big things in there is that the, the devolution areas will have more say on the, how the highways' funding is allocated. And the truth, the blunt truth is, if you're not in a mayor combined authority area, you will lose out. And we've lost out already on various funding opportunities, the bus improvement plan, for example, it all went to, mostly went to where the devolution. So it's, I'm not saying it's a straightforward, but I think you've got to decide what is most important here. Is it keeping Greater Lincolnshire intact? Is it bringing devolution a first step towards devolution for Greater Lincolnshire? I think that is the case. And I think I would put a challenge to councillor, any Labour member, the previous Labour version of devolution was to regions, and we had the regional assembly. And what worries me, what, and I think it's something you need to, I don't know what's in the proposal, detailed proposals, but what will be very dangerous for Lincolnshire will be part of a regional devolution. We've been down that road before, and frankly, it wasn't a very happy exercise for us, because bluntly, we missed out on much of the powers. I think it's important that people actually read the government bill, which it soon will be, and it's quite clear in there that there are no powers will be taken away from any council and pushed upstairs, and only if that council wishes to do so. And indeed, the government has had to back down on the planning, because there was a clause in there which the government could somehow take power, planning powers away from local planning authorities. That has been removed, because I think it was felt to be that, that that's what it was. Councillor Overton, is the gimmick? No, it's not a gimmick, this has been going along, going on a long, long time. The direction of travel is pretty obvious, that's what the government wants, and I think the key question for, if we have a Labour government, will they actually just carry on the journey? And I, I have a feeling this has gone so far now that everywhere should have a, a mayor or combined authority or, or something equivalent, they are the ones who are going to do that. So again, coming back to districts, there is no powers in the bill which are proposed, which will change the boundaries or powers of any council, including district councils. I do take the point, I mean, it is important, you say what's the let? Well, those are the businesses actually do the employing and bring the prosperity to Lincolnshire, so I would argue that is very important, that we make sure that they do. And unanimously, they've said, yes, we want it, and please get on with it, will you? And which is why, one of the reasons this paper has come here today. So I do hope members will vote for this, because it's quite simple, do you want devolution? Do you want Greater Lincolnshire as an entity protected? That's the risk if we don't go for this at this particular time. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I have a point of information, if I may.
Yes, you go.
I didn't, out of respect, I didn't want to interrupt councillor Hill in his flow in, in summing up, but I've actually got the, he informed us that, and I respect it, you may have misremembered, Martin, but when you said that you voted against it in, in 2016, well, I've got to say, the, I've got the record in front of me, the minutes of 2016 October of this council, and it is, it was a recorded vote, and I regret that this won't be a recorded vote for, you know, democratic reasons. But, but it is noted that five...
Councillor, don't, I think you've made your point.
Well, I haven't yet, Madam Chairman. The record states, and I, I just wish, you know, I hope Martin might want to respond, but the record states that councillor Hill was one of five, councillor Hill OBE, he actually abstained, according to the record.
Okay, right.
Yes.
My recollection is I voted against, because it was a free vote.
Right, shall we, now?
So I can't, I mean, obviously, I didn't note, I didn't, I didn't actually look at the minutes of the, but I, I know, I remember, and I can ask colleagues who were there at the time, I voted against, and I, I'm happy to repeat that again. Thank you.
Right. That then brings this debate to a close, and we, therefore, will move to the vote. There shouldn't be any more speakers at this stage. Right. Can we see those in favour, please? Forty-four, forty-four, right, thank you. Those against? And any abstentions? I'm keeping outside of party politics. Right.
Chairman, could I have my vote recorded, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have mine recorded, please. Nine against.
You can do that individually.
Right. You'll do that, will you? Thank you. Right, then, if I can have the figures? Right, then, that was, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read the numbers. Right, so if people want to know, there were forty-four in favour, nine against, and two abstentions. Thank you. Right, so that was clearly carried. Right. Now, if you can cope with it, we would like to move straight on without a break. I appreciate you've done very well up till now, thank you. We now move to motions on notice submitted in accordance with the chairman's, sorry, with the council's constitution, and I have a motion by the Labour Group in front of me. Councillor Parker, would you like to move your motion?
Yep. Well, that's managed to clear the council chamber, hasn't it? I mean, we've got, we're moving, aren't we, from the macro, big, high-level stuff, to the micro, but both are important in local government, you know, there's, we spend a lot of time talking about how we can influence governments, how we respond to government, but at the same time, we need to do the same, how do we respond to our local people? That's why this motion has been brought before us today. Essentially, it's quite simple, it's about saying that parking on the pavement is becoming more and more of a nuisance and a problem in, particularly in inner-city areas, but not exclusively so, and that we ought to give perhaps more attention to it in two sorts of ways. One is the carrot, the other is the stick. The carrot is simply to say, okay, what can we do to promote better parkers? And I use that coming from my name. So I would like to see this council chamber all be better parkers, but that's another story. But essentially, it's about saying that it's not on, it's not really good enough to park on the pavement, simply because it causes trouble to other people. And you know the list, people with disabilities, people in wheelchairs, people pushing prams, et cetera. Okay, so that's, we need through our communications team, and in a sense liaison with Lincolnshire Police, to try to get the message across in a better way than we are doing at the moment. There is a financial advantage to it at all, because the number of cracked pavements, you can see in my council division, I'm sure is no different to other council divisions where pavements are being cracked because of the weight of cars on the pavement. Pavements were not designed at all for parking on, so. The point about it is to try to get people to do the business. But by the same token, we ought to recognise that sometimes it's essential that there is parking enforcement, and that's a matter for the police, and we need to work with them. It's not the biggest issue that you'll ever face on the council, I know, but it's the sort of thing that I can't help but feel links a lot of councillors. I regularly, and I don't think I'm any different to anybody else, gets photographs sent to me, and what are you going to do about this? And there's a picture of a car on the pavement, and, okay, you respond, and yes, it then becomes a matter essentially for the police, because it's retrospective. And I'm not decrying the police, they've got their own priorities, but I think that we, as a local authority, can do more through promotion of good practice, and also liaising with the police to try to get some recognition that this can't go on. It will go on, but it's about the question of people realising that when they do park on pavements, that it's not on, and they shouldn't be doing it. I don't know whether people feel guilty about it or not. That's the reason the Labour Group have brought this motion before us. I hope that there is not, what's always called, I don't think it's controversial, and I'm looking for the support of members of this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, we need a second, please. Two of you fighting, councillor Clark?
Yeah. Thank you, Chairman. Can't really say what happens in other parts of the county, but if pavement parking only takes place in Lincoln, that in itself is really weird. The issue across Lincoln Centre isn't improving, in fact, it's the complete opposite. Many times, parents with children or people in wheelchairs actually feel safer walking down the middle of the road than walking on the path, due to the line of cars parking along it, taking the majority of the path, and often only leaving little spaces to squeeze by. Obviously, paths and roads are constructed differently, and therefore, paths are not there to take the weight of vehicles. How many times can you walk along a stretch of path, come to tactiles, and find they're all smashed up because cars have been parking on them? Highway officers respond to complaints and come up with some solutions. However, the issue is clear, when the authority can and does act where there are TROs in place. Other issues are classed normally as obstructions and a matter for the police. But often, when residents ring the police, they're told it's an highway issue, and of course, highways say it's a police matter. Residents just get fed up of complaining and think it's the norm. The motion is to address the issue firstly, to make motorists aware that parking on paths isn't acceptable, and would please formulate a statement giving clear direction on whose responsibility it is in black and white. Thank you. All that without mentioning parking outside schools.
Thank you, councillor Clark. All right, I have a few speakers. Councillor Brockway.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is a very good motion, and I'm glad it's come forward, actually, I intend to support it. And this is something that's raised regularly with me by the residents in my division, but I'd like to add to it, not to propose an amendment, because I think this is a very good starting point, but I'd like to add to the discussion about, I'd want us to think, what is the option for those people who live in very narrow streets? What is the option for those who've got one parking space by their houses and then have two or three cars with the family? Because rightly or wrongly, we are a car-oriented society still. One thing that has worried me in my own division is that new estates that have been going up over the last few years and are now nearing completion, so before the recent improvements came in with regard to this, they're going up, and the roads have been built in such a way, they're twisty-turny, and there is nowhere safe to park. If you park on the right-hand side, a car coming straight through is going to have to avoid you. But the residents have nowhere for their visitors to park. I had parked in one street in one of the new build estates that's going up in my division, and I parked my car and realised that if a fire engine or such came along, they wouldn't be able to get past me. So I really think that this is an excellent starting point, but I do think we need to engage further with the planning authorities, you know, to, who are allowing these estates through, to say, you know, have you thought about the roads more carefully? Can you please consider the families who have disabilities and a number of cars? And there needs to be a consideration about keeping the flow going, plus the needs of the families in the houses. For me, the big issue with this, I do have to go on a school run, and the only way I can park safely is to put two wheels on the pavement, and it's very uncomfortable. I get out, I check the wits, but it's not good, because I'm on the pavement, it's wrong, I know that. There's no other way of parking and collecting a disabled child. So you've opened a really good debate here, and I would certainly want to support it going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Bunny.
Thank you. Without going over the whole debate, I think we would support this motion, because clearly, parking on the pavement is a problem. We get an awful lot of complaints about it in market towns and so on, and we need to do something about it. But I would echo what councillor Brockway has said, that it's not the only car parking issue that we need to look at, and I think that's something which is for further debate, but this motion as put is a good positive start, and I certainly will be voting it for it, and I'm sure my colleagues will as well.
Thank you. Councillor Davis?
Thank you, yes, I mean, I appreciate the time we had earlier on in the week, Rob, to discuss this, and I think this is a really good motion, it's proper local politics, makes a change from some of the ethereal stuff we sometimes talk about. There's no doubt about it, I think parking, I wouldn't say it was a little issue, actually, I would say it's one of the most significant issues I have to deal with, there are no clear answers. By way of some numbers, so far this year through our nuisance parking hotline, we've had nearly 400, I think 387 reports of what you might call hotspot dangerous parking, about, only about 20 of those with HGVs, this is pavement parking, the vast majority of car users, and they, I'll agree, we've got to think about verges, we've got to think about pavements, in some locations, you have no choice but to park on the pavement. In terms of cost to outlaw it, we are talking under the current arrangements, it gets very expensive very quickly. By the time you put up signage, TROs, two or three inspections a day over the course of a year, you're talking, you know, over £10,000 for even just a 100-metre stretch of pavement, which is why through the BPA, we are lobbying for the government, and it's subject to ministerial review at the moment, to try and relax, and comes back to this devolution thing, doesn't it? Relax some of the rules and guidance, give us more powers locally, and remove some of that red tape that does make it so difficult. There will be different solutions for different places, you know, a lot of councillors' parkers, areas like mine in Grantham, there's lots of narrow terrace streets, and it's a real issue there. But likewise, I know colleagues in more rural areas have problems with people parking on verges, and the mess that makes is equally council-productive in places. So I look forward to drilling down into this a bit more in the future. But I would, councillor Clark, let's not forget parking outside schools. You know, you and I have spent frankly too much time together looking at this, and if we could, that's the one issue that, I would suggest every member in this chamber has a problem with, if we could just crack half of those, we'd all retire in a far better place than we started.
Thank you, councillor Dilks.
Thanks very much, Madam Chairman. I recognise this is a hot topic, it's a bread and butter issue, isn't it? And I support the motion. Sometimes we're surprised at who the culprits are who park on the pavements illegally. It's Christmas, so let me tell you a little story, if I may. My kitchen fronts onto the, onto a village road, a village main street, and some years ago, I was making a sandwich at lunchtime, and I was rather shocked when a car drove up onto the pavement right outside my house and parked, completely blocking pedestrian access. And frequently, I get pushchairs coming past there, people going to school, et cetera, and particularly disabled people, there's a gentleman walks, a guide dog, you know, and needs that access. And so I was even more shocked when I realised it was a police panda car. You remember those? Curious, I opened the window and I looked down the street to see what the emergency was that he'd been called to, just in time to see a police officer emerging from the bakery next door to me, clutching the lunch that he'd just purchased. Seeing me, he came over, he picked the wrong one, I've got to tell you, he came over to me and he said rather aggressively, have you got a problem? And I said, yeah, I'm a bit surprised that you parked illegally on the pavement to get your lunch. And he looked at me and said, well, you get on with your sandwich, and I'll get on with police in Lincolnshire. And off he went. I complained directly to the chief constable, suggesting that the officer would benefit from some training, and I was assured that he'd been given an interview without coffee. I haven't noticed any police cars parking there since then, but it has become an increasing problem, not just down my street, but across my ward, and I know right across Lincolnshire. It is a real issue. The other day, I had a police, I had someone complaining to me, and councillor Davis rightly talked about TROs, we managed to get a TRO outside a local primary school, Lynchfield Primary School, which I really welcome, but a bus spent 10 minutes loading a class of children there, nobody could get by, and a PCSO happened to be going by, and a resident or a driver remonstrated with the police, can you sort the bus out? They're on zigzag lines. Sorry, nothing to do with me, they're not enforceable. And, you know, that's the way we are. So I really do welcome at least the debate that we're having to bring some attention and hope that, you know, we can do something to educate people better not to park on pavements. It's unlawful.
Thank you, councillor Dilks, I think you've ended dead on time very well, thank you. Councillor Danny?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I will just share some information with you, because this issue, we had it a couple of years ago at Boston-on-B-Tac meeting, and we had the police with us, and we were talking about the same issues, basically. And the answer was, if you are parked on the pavement and you can have a pusher which can go between, it's fine, there's no issues. And that's the answer of the police. Sometimes I question myself, do we need more parking attendants in every street? We can't do that. Do we need to have CCTV cameras probably to issue fines for the offenders? I don't know if it's visible, or we have the means and the money to do that. We have to accept that most of the streets in, I always talk about Boston, I can talk about Grantham, Gainsborough, the streets are very narrow, and most of the time, if they're narrow and there is always one-way traffic, then the people, they will park cars on both sides, and that's the reality. So how to deal with it, in which way, probably will be difficult. Is it something that we have to educate people, and probably send more information? Or as councillor Davis stated, you know, we have to have probably signs everywhere? I don't know if it's going to work. We're living in society now, which is from myself, they don't care, everybody you talk to, I'm not bothered, and that's the reality of it. The other thing, I think, respect and courtesy is just a word, nobody, you know, would like to do anything. Sometime, my wife and my son, they were in a car and were driving through Sydney Street in Boston, and a car was parked the same way, and they couldn't pass, so they waited for someone to come, nobody appears to come, and my wife beeped, and a gentleman came with a baseball bat and said, I'm going to smash your windscreen. So you can't talk to people these days, it's difficult. And the other thing which is I want to mention is, how can we deal with the issue? How can we educate our residents? How can we deliver the message to these people? Schools is something else, you talk to the schools or the head teacher, we haven't got any power over anybody to park wherever they want, so it's just fine. Then you have residents, as councillor Parker stated, they complain to every councillor, the streets, they are parking on the verge, they are parking on the turn, you have blind corners, I seen a van yesterday on Turner Street parked on the corner. So you can't talk to people, you cannot educate people, it must be a way, probably as councillors, we have to work harder to probably come up with an idea. And as some of my colleagues stated, it's a very good topic, and I think is concerning, and we have to turn these things around.
Thank you, councillor Danny. I think you've summed up very nicely again on time. Thank you. Councillor, Mrs Overton?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Yes, I did go to speak at COP27 four times on behalf of European local governments, and yes, I do offset all of our carbon, our family do that, we offset all our carbon use, and we didn't plant four trees, we planted 400 trees, and have plans for two more fields to be set aside for natural regeneration. So I am going to talk about carbon emissions. And one part of this parking is that we have to try to reduce the reliance on vehicles, and you know this very well, but it's just a reminder that this is part of the discussion. We've just, I've just checked back on the website, and this council recognised recently that 40% of the county's emissions are from transport. The next greatest ones are from business, commerce, and domestic housing, which are 30%. So if we are looking for savings in money as well as in emissions, the two go together, let us think about how to save money and save the planet, and see if we can improve the public transport so that people don't want to have a car to park. It's actually a lot more easier to use public transport. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Colin Matthews?
Thank you very much, madam chair. I think it's a great idea, looking at this issue, but I would like to put in a plea for all the farmers who have to drive very large vehicles, particularly between June and October, who really appreciate cars that are parked off the main road, because their vehicles are so massive that where there's parking on the roads, they can't get through, and neither can they reverse or turn round, and they create regular log jams, and this just isn't on minor roads, their vehicles are so big, they have to travel on the A-roads as well. So in Sutton-on-C, the A1111, leading into Sutton-on-C, is regularly jammed with agricultural vehicles, and we would love those cars to park on the pavement, because then we could get through. So it's not a straightforward issue, I think it's a great idea and I'm going to support it, but I would ask if you're going to do any sort of looking at it, Richard, if we could have double yellow lines on one side of that road, so at least there was a minimum width for large agricultural vehicles to get through, and I don't think that's a Sutton-on-C issue, I think it's an agricultural vehicle issue as we move to bigger, heavier stuff. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much, a different angle. Councillor Whittington.
Yes, thank you very much, madam chairman. Yes, I will be supporting this motion, I think it's a great first start, first step, but there are issues. I represent a division that's mixed urban and rural, and these issues, it's not just a town-based issue, it's a rural-based issue as well. The present amount of time, in terms of parking outside schools, I'm dealing with one issue in a village, and the other one outside a big secondary school in Grantham, so the divisions are very similar. You know, the other point that councillor Matthews has just made, in my division as well, we do have problems with the sheer size these days of agricultural vehicles, and there is one particular road, actually, exit Barrowby, where if the residents were not parked on the pavement, the size of these agricultural vehicles quite simply would not be able to get through safely. So there are problems. We have to accept the fact that when an awful lot of our towns and our villages developed, it was in a pre-car era. Obviously, modern estates can be designed, hopefully, and at the point made by councillor Brockway, to accommodate traffic, but I mean, I know there are certainly some parts of Grantham where the roads are so narrow that if cars were not parked on the pavement on both sides, there would not be access and egress along the main part of the road. So I think this is an excellent first step, and we'll be supporting it, but I do think we do need to start looking at other issues around parking outside schools as well, and also potentially in urban areas where there are large agricultural vehicles, what steps we can do in terms of perhaps double yellow lines on one side of a road to enable large agricultural machinery to move about freely. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whittington. If I see no more speakers, sorry, councillor Dyer.
Thank you very much, chairman, and it's been an interesting debate, and I'll be pleased to support it as well, and thank councillor Parker for bringing this forward, and it's, as councillor Davis said, it's nice to debate something about local government for once in this council chamber, so thank you, and hopefully everyone in the chamber will be supporting it. And I am pleased as well, councillor Overton, that you offset your carbon emissions. We've raised an important point, and that's about sustainable transport, sustainable travel, and part of that is our footpaths that are so important for people to get about. I walk my dog every day, and it is a blight, you know, when vehicles are parking on pavements, blocking routes, et cetera, so it's certainly something that we can all get behind and support. And also, as well, recently, there was a document that was circulated that some members may have seen, I'll just read an element of that, if I may, chairman, it's, travel solutions are abundant, sustainable, and green. Trains have been upgraded and more frequent, and we've invested in other modes, as such as rapid bus transit schemes, et cetera, et cetera, and it goes on, about green and sustainable transport. That document, chairman, was the devolution deal that we've just discussed, so councillor Overton, it's good to see that you tried to vote that one down, so you missed a trick there. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you. Right, councillor Key.
Thank you, madam chairman. My work takes me all around the county, including all around Lincoln, so I absolutely see where you're coming from, and I think it is Christmas, and it's nice that we could end with a motion that I think we're all agreeing on, really. It is a first step. I particularly like the bit about the communication of better parking. Somebody said to me about something completely different just recently, it's all a question of doing things thoughtfully rather than thoughtlessly, and I think that could be the message, really, that it's just a question of bearing in mind other people when you're abandoning your car. So I absolutely support this, it's a very good motion, thank you.
Thank you. Well, before I move to the summing up stage, I will add my own comment. I think probably my area bears some resemblance to councillor Whittington insofar as I have some edge-of-town, urban, and some very rural, and everything in between, so I appreciate it. And interestingly, one thing I'd like to comment is that we were having in one of these committees that I sit on, where we approve traffic, you know, parking regulations, that we were having to put parking restrictions on round road junctions, which is against the highway, you know, everything's in the highway code. And we do have to acknowledge, though, that one size doesn't fit all, also the fact that local transport for some of us is non-existent, but we've got to bear in mind that the local situation, you know, it's safety that's the important thing. Now, it's not just a case of when you're parking, because you're late to getting your child to school, most of us have done, many of us have done this at some stage, but it's a little bit self-discipline, isn't it, from the point of view of parents not just taking the easy option? You have to think these things in advance, where am I going to park? Not walk quick, where can I get my child out and nobody notice? So I think, you know, it is this point of education that's going to be important. Right, I don't think that's a party political point at all, so I'm happy to make it. And thank you, my vice-chairman says, be mindful of emergency vehicles. Right, if that's then the end of the speakers, we will turn back to, I think, you've seconded this, haven't you, councillor Clark, but you spoke at the time, so that turns us back to the original, which is councillor Parker. Thank you.
I can just say very much, except to say thank you for those that supported it in the council chamber, and I know it's not a perfect motion, it is a starting point, because it's an issue that I think is important in some ways to every member of the council, so I'm looking forward to support. Thank you.
Thank you, and you don't, councillor Hill will speak after the vote, that's fine then. Right, so we move to the vote. Since we don't have any more speakers at this stage, those in favour, please show. We think it's unanimous, are there any against? And any abstentions? Oh, well, that's a very good way to finish, isn't it? I think well done, and for being so disciplined, we've got through in a very, very good time. And I now then will, oh, yes, sorry, councillor Hill, you wish to speak.
Happy Christmas, Labour Group, pleased to be helpful. Just for information, ladies and gentlemen, the director just informed me, the A15 is still blocked between Lincoln and Slough, so those going that way, I suggest there are alternative ways round it, but don't do the A15, thank you.
Thank you. Right, that sounds like a few more of us will be going through Branston then. Thank you. Right, well, that concludes the business of this meeting, and I'd like to take this opportunity of wishing you all a Merry Christmas and a happy and prosperous New Year, although, interestingly, of course, we've still got scrutiny meetings, so we're perhaps having this council meeting slightly earlier in the calendar than sometimes, when it really is the very last thing that people do before Christmas. I have to remind people that there is a councillor development session or event, less corporate, more parenting taking place. I know some people have attended this previously, but not all of us could get to it, but it's relevant, I think, to everybody, and I myself feel I shall have to sit in, I couldn't get to the last one, well, I did, I drove to it, and it was cancelled whilst I was driving. So there'll be a 30-minute pause before that session finishes, and I have to remind members to collect their post from their pigeonholes. I, as your chairman, am sending an e-card to you this time, I hope it'll print off, if you like to have your cards actually up. And finally, I've been very, very encouraged by the amount of food items that have been brought from one of my charities, Centrepoint Outreach in Boston, so thank you very much, all of you who have brought things, and also for the odd financial contribution that has been as well. So with that, then, that closes this meeting, thank you very much, and a happy Christmas and a safe Christmas. Thank you.